Hey, everybody.
Hi, C N.
Before we start, I want to tell you something awesome. And I'll figure out how to load my pictures so between the meetings you can see it. But I took advantage of the Plymouth Parks and Rec trick or treat thing. You've been trick or treated. So a pair of lovely ladies wearing masks today came out to our yard and put 100 pieces of candy on sticks in our yard. So the twins, when they got home, I gave them their buckets. And they got to trick or treat completely safe in our yard, also not wearing costumes, which is easy for everyone because then you almost always have to go to the bathroom. And they even got to pick which of the candies they wanted. So there didn't even need to be horse trading. And they just went back and forth. And I'm currently eating a semi frozen Milky Way and it is delicious. And might eat more candy by the end of this meeting. I am going to be high on sugar. Was it awesome, Bowie?
Hi, Bo. How fun. What kind of candy did you get?
Most of the candy was Skittles and Swedish fish.
A Swedish fish. Oh, my. That sounds fun.
All right, well, go. Good job. You're so sweet.
C N, did you say this was a City of Plymouth thing?
Yes. So I signed up like one of their additional things. And I also did it for my goddaughter who's at Birchview. So she rolled off the bus and got to do it. I'm stoked and it was a fun thing for them to do. Nice surprise. Also chocolate.
Making the best of our COVID Halloween, then. That sounds fun. All right, welcome, everyone. We'll get started in about one minute. All right, I think we'll get started. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for joining us this afternoon. I'm Andrea Keen. I'm Chair of the Wayzetta School Board. And I call to order this special meeting for Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, October 26, 2020. This meeting is live streamed on the district's YouTube channel. It's also recorded and will be posted on the school board page of the district website. On Friday, March 13th, Governor Walz issued Executive Order 20-01, which declared a peacetime state of emergency pursuant to his powers under the Minnesota Statutes Chapter 12 Emergency Management. This allows school boards to meet by conference call or other electronic means under the Minnesota Statute 13D dot zero two one. So before we'll begin, I'll go through a couple of Zoom meeting protocol reminders that will apply to both this special meeting as well as our subsequent work session. Please identify yourself when speaking. If you have background noise at your house, please mute your microphone while listening. Please do not make use of the chat feature as this is a live, public and recorded meeting. And in an attempt to make sure all voices are heard, each board member will be called upon for each agenda item. Feel free to pass if you don't have a question or a comment. Okay, let's get started. Could the clerk, please call the roll?
Yes, Sarah Johansson.
Here.
Bonita Lucky, here. Cheryl Polzin.
Here.
C N Falconer.
Here.
Chris McCullough.
Here.
Linda Cohen.
Here.
Chase Anderson.
Here.
Andrea Keen.
Here. Welcome, everyone. For our special meeting, we only have one agenda item under Business and Finance. We've got General Obligation Alternative Facilities Refunding Bond. I will turn it over to Jim Westrom for the good news.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Actually, I'm going to have our Director of Business Services, Mert Woodruff, make a few remarks. And we also have a guest from Ellers this evening, Jeff Sealy. Will also be able to make some remarks as well. So Mert, if you would like to share the results of that sale, please.
Thank you, Jim and Chair Keen. Good afternoon, members of the board. Superintendent Anderson and anyone else who may be attending our special meeting this afternoon. You will recall that last month at the September regular meeting, the board approved a resolution authorizing district administration to take proposals and to execute the sale of bond refunding the 2012A General Obligation Alt Facilities Bonds. As part of that process, district requested an updated credit opinion from ratings agencies Moody's. I'm very pleased to report that Moody's on October 15th reaffirmed and assigned a AAA credit rating to the district, which is the highest rating. I think that credit rating reflects the district's sound fiscal management as well as the excellent job that the board has done in terms of governance. So congratulations to all that were involved with that. The basic parameter of the refunding resolution that was passed last month was that the district would achieve a net present value savings of a minimum of $275,000 or about 2.88% of debt service. I'm pleased to report that last week, I believe Wednesday, the district received several satisfactory bids for those bonds. And we will achieve a present value savings of about $431,000. Those are direct savings to our taxpayers, which will be realized during the 2021 through 23 property tax levies. As Jim mentioned a moment ago, our municipal advisors and strategic partners, Ellers, are here tonight. At this time, I'd like to invite them to provide any additional remarks regarding this refunding.
Great, well, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you to the board and all present. My name is Jeff Sealy and I'm with Ellers. And you know, Mert did such a great job reviewing this. So there isn't a whole lot to add, but as you know, the board passed a parameter resolution, as Mert explained, and we took bids last Wednesday. And we received five bids. The winning bidder was, had a true interest cost well below what was anticipated. And it's going to save $434,000, which is about the tax levy, which adds in our 5% to that, is about $152,000 a year through '21 through '23. So you have a sale day report there. I'm going to jump down to the attachment page one. Those are your bids. Winning bid was from Piper Sandler and Company of Minneapolis, Minnesota. Baird was, Milwaukee was second. Northland was third. And BNY Mellon of Pittsburgh. And then Stiefel Nicholas of Birmingham, Alabama. So you attracted quite a bit of attention from some national underwriters. That's to be expected with the excellent rating that you have. I mean, you have a AAA rating, as Mert said, that's a tribute to your hard work in maintaining a level that is excellent, for that matter, on your finances. I believe there's only three schools in the state with a AAA rating. So you're in excellent company, very few peers with that regard. So you can see the bids range from a true interest rate of about 0.39 to 0.68%. And just kind of scrolling through the attachments, the attachment page two, that is the source and uses of the bonds. Obviously, the use, 9.2 million is to refund the 2012A bonds. You did receive a large premium, about $950,000. A premium is basically paid to you upfront. In return, the investor gets a little higher interest rate. And the reason that's important is in this market with very low interest rates, investors want to earn a higher rate of return. But in return for earning that higher rate, they have to pay you more than face value upfront. So you're generating $950,000 upfront that the investors are paying you. That goes towards the refunding. So if you take a look at the next page, these are your old bonds. You can see principal payments ranging from 1.9, that's free, 3.8 and then 3.5, so 9.2 million. The coupons or interest rates on those are two and a quarter to 3%. So what you're going to notice when we look at the very next page is these are the new bonds. And you can see your interest rate is 5%. Well, how can that save money? Well, because they gave you nearly a million dollars upfront in order to obtain a 5% rate of return. So that million dollars actually changes the scenario. And if you look down below, there's a line called True Interest Cost. That is taking into account the premium, roughly a million dollars, and these interest rates. And you have a true interest cost of less than 0.4%, which is excellent. So how does that compare side by side? You can see the next page. Your savings are about $143,000, $144,000 a year from '22 to '24 totaling 434,000. Now, remember when you levy, you actually add the 5% on top of that. So it's about $152,000 a year in levy that you're saving. And you can see the present value benefit is well above, I'm sorry, the parameter of 2.88. It's actually 4.4%. That's that top NP, net present value benefit number. So excellent results. You have a, oh, and I did include the rating credit opinion from Moody's because you guys, like I said, are one of three in the state. So you can see what they said about your district, where the strengths were. Obviously, with a AAA, you really don't have many weaknesses or challenges, as they call them. You guys are in excellent position, so congratulations on that. So you have a ratifying resolution. The bonds were actually sold last Wednesday and signed off on. But this gives the board an opportunity to go through the sale results, ask any questions, and then pass a resolution that ratifies the sale of.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy, for being here. And I appreciate your comments, especially the explanation about how the premiums work upfront in the big picture. That's helpful. Mr. Westrom, should I go forward with the recommended action? Okay, great. The recommended action before us is to approve the resolution, ratifying the award of the sale, determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery and registration, and providing for the payment of the General Obligation Alternative Facilities Refunding Bonds Series 2020A. Is there a motion to approve?
This is Sarah. I so move and ask that we waive the reading of the resolution.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there a second?
This is Linda, and I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And I'll go through the list. Any discussion from Linda Cohen?
No, thank you.
All right, thanks. C N Falconer.
Oh, thank you.
Sarah Johansson.
Mert, so great to have a presentation from you at our meeting. Thanks, Ellers, and thanks to CFAC for their continued guidance in this process.
Chris McCullough.
No specific discussion, just wanted to echo what Sarah said. And a huge, huge congratulations to Jim and Mert and Jill and the entire finance team with help from Ellers on our bond rating. Thanks.
Cheryl Polzin.
Good. Nothing further at this time.
Bonita Lucky.
Just congratulations. Super exciting news and no further questions or comments.
All right, thank you. My only comment is that in my attempt to clap hands as a reaction for the AAA bond rating, I saw that Zoom must have had an update. And now one of the reaction choices is a party hat. So that seemed a little unprofessional, so I didn't put it. But congratulations to Jim and Jill and Mert. Thank you so much. It's good news for the board and great news for our community. So thanks. Could the clerk, please call the roll?
Yes, Bonita Lucky. Yes. Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
C N Falconer.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes. The motion carries unanimously. Thanks, everyone, and thanks again to Mr. Sealy for being here. That concludes our special meeting for October 26, 2020. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I so move, Linda.
C N Falconer, I second.
Could the clerk, please call the roll?
Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
C N Falconer.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, yes. Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thanks. All right, on to our work session. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. I'm Andrea Keen. I'm Chair of the Wayzetta School Board. And I call to order our work session for Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, October 26, 2020. This meeting is live streamed on the district's YouTube channel. It is also recorded and will be posted on the school board page of the district website. In lieu of introductions, because we're on Zoom, could the clerk, please call the roll?
Yes, Bonita Lucky, here. Cheryl Polzin.
Here.
C N Falconer.
Here.
Linda Cohen.
Here.
Sarah Johansson.
Here.
Chris McCullough.
Here.
Ace Anderson.
Here.
Andrea Keen.
Here. It's great to see everyone. First, on our agenda for our work session, under Administrative, we have our annual QCOM presentation. And typically, we do this earlier in the year. But unfortunately, because of some COVID-related agenda items that took precedence, we had to postpone our QCOM presentation. So it's going to be worth the wait. Welcome, Brad Anderson. And I'm wondering if Dr. Johnson would like to do an introduction?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Anderson and viewing public. As part of the requirements to have the QCOM program is an annual report to the school board and to the public. And our program supervisor, Brad Anderson, is here this evening to share the annual report with you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, Madam Chair, and the rest of the school board. It is my pleasure today to talk a little bit about the QCOM program. I'm going to refer to both last year and then actually lead a little bit into this year and how we're adapting to meet the challenges that COVID and some of this online learning has presented to us. So to assist me with this process, I've invited Karen Nichol. Some of you might know Karen. I'm going to let her tell you a little more about herself when she gets to talking. But I thought it would be beneficial for you to also hear from a peer coach who can tell you specifically some of the things that she's seen live in action, as we refer to these more general themes. So if I can, I'm going to share. First of all, I want to let you know that while our program has not changed that much over the, I think it's 13 years that we've gone through this now, we do try to update it every single year. And we try to do that by looking at what our survey results told us the year before and what's going on in our school, what our teachers want and need. But the basics of the program stay the same. And that is this personalized approach to professional development for our teaching staff. That's been our approach since day one. And over the 13 years or so that we've had this program, one of the things we've seen is that teachers really appreciate the fact that they have a lot of control over their own professional development. We use a cognitive coaching method. And so a lot of the growth is through questions and paraphrasing and helping teachers think about their praxis and how they might do a better job of it. Last year, when we started out, one of the first things we do, and we do this every year, is we set our group norms. And our peer coaches sit down and we take about a good half a day and we talk about how are we going to operate? And we talk about what we think's important. And interesting enough, then we actually use those group norms as we went forward with the year. And so when I'm talking about the themes for last year, we started with equity. Our peer coaches felt that it was extremely important that that was a part of our norms. Now, this is not new to our district. We've been focusing on this for a number of years. And the fact that it has been over a number of years has really allowed us to become much more comfortable in dealing with some of the dialogue that goes along with equity and creating a safe place where everyone can speak freely and not feel judged. And I think we took that into last year quite well. The second thing we looked at, and this came back from some feedback that we had received from some teachers, was about the need for them to feel some control over being successful, efficacy. And one of the things we know is that efficacy is one of the key factors in student learning. So what we wanted to try to do was work on both efficacy for the individual teacher as well as group efficacy. And I think the focusing on this part really made a difference as we got to the end of the year, when things started to change and people had to come up with new solutions. And then the last one we added was this idea that while we come to work and we're very serious about what we do, this idea of enjoying each other, enjoying the job and finding joy and play in the work that we do. And we took this into the year in the form of questions to each of our staff that we were coaching around where the staff experiences joy. It could be in their lesson, it could be in their home life, it could be in their school. But we wanted to somehow get them to realize that not only are they in charge of their own joy, that there are moments of joy that they should and they can develop into their praxis. As a part of our end of the year, I asked our peer coaches, what did you feel were the most important things from last year that the board needs to know? And interesting enough, the first thing that a number of our peer coaches talked about was the fact that relationships do matter. No matter what we do as far as a program goes, if you don't have a relationship with the people you're working with, it's really difficult to help them move forward. So relationships definitely matter. Last spring, when COVID hit, the state suspended the requirement that teachers go through their evaluations, that they continue their evaluations. During that time, however, we had many teachers who, despite the fact that they didn't have to do evaluations or do any more coaching, that they chose to reach out and work with their peer coach. And I think this says a lot about the relationship that had been developed between the two and how they look at their peer coach, that they go to their peer coach a lot of times to help them solve their problems or challenges. Staff also were under a lot of stress, having to, in a very short period of time, turn around from teaching in a more traditional manner of being in the classroom with their students to doing it online. And the fact that they were able to turn to their peer coach and their peer coach could have empathy towards the fact that they were juggling so many things, staff talked about how much appreciation they had for this. And then the last one, and a couple of the peer coaches talked about this, was that many of our teachers showed resilience. And that resilience was really the result of conversations that they had been having with their teachers all year long. It wasn't something that we just started talking about in the spring. It was something that our teachers had already worked on. So one of the things I'd like to do now is have Karen Nichol, who is our peer coach at West Middle School, and she's also done Gleason Lake, share a little bit about her perspective of last year and give you an idea of what it looked like from a coach. Karen?
Thank you, Coach Anderson. Madam Chair and school board superintendent and public, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here virtually and share some thoughts with you. As Brad said, I'm Karen Nichol. And for most of my career, I've been at the high school as a German teacher. I've also had the opportunity to fill other roles in the district. And last year, I was a peer coach for the first of my three-year term. Being a first-year peer coach, I was learning something new. But I have to say that the strong reputation, the strong positive reputation of peer coaching in the district really made that first year much easier. I was able to build relationships, have trust, have confidential conversations with people because we do have just such a valuable program here. And staff do see the value in it. So what I want to do is touch on three of the things that Brad already mentioned from last year. Joy, equity, and efficacy. So as peer coaches, we really did fill buckets. We just tried to fill people's buckets with joy last year. And one of the best ways to fill buckets with joy is ask people what brings them joy. Some of the answers we got? Seeing the aha moment from a student. Watching students become more self-directed. And a lot of teachers said, learning something new from my students. And then spring came, right? And we all pivoted and the peer coach role changed a bit. And what we found ourselves doing in the realm of joy was building and maintaining relationships across the buildings as a way to keep joy alive. How did equity work last year? Well, thanks to Solvay and many other people who worked on equity in the district, staff got a uniform message and everybody got that message. That made our work as peer coaches so much easier because then we were able to come in and we knew that there was already some groundwork set. We knew what we were doing. Peer coaching is a very special relationship because it is confidential. Staff are willing to take risks with us. And I think that was shown in the survey as well, that there really is a confidence in our ability as peer coaches to help staff take risks and delve into things, sometimes often uncomfortable spaces. But that's where we learn things. That's where we can really make meaningful changes and impact each and every student. With regards to efficacy, that's probably the thing that saved us last spring. We all learned new technologies and ways to interact online. And the peer coach role evolved in the spring as well with efficacy, for sure. We became PLC facilitators sometimes. We became instructional coaches. One thing that I did a lot of was act as a student in a teacher's canvas or seesaw so that I could say, yeah, this worked, this didn't work. I was able to do this, I wasn't able to do that. And that was great valuable information for our teachers. But we never stopped cognitive coaching because cognitive coaching is really what helps open up their thinking. So even with all that, at the end of the year, I have to say that teachers' buckets were empty. Joy, equity, efficacy helped us get through the spring. But we were also spent, as many of you well know. And I'll save my other comments because they're about this year. So I'll hand it back to Brad.
Thank you, Karen. Every year, at the end of the year, we give a survey to our teachers and try to receive some feedback on how things are going and where we can improve. And we just want to respond to what they share with us, their needs are. And last year, our survey went out. And last year, our survey went out as scheduled, but it just happened to be two weeks right after our teachers started teaching from a distance. We did not know how the attitudes of teachers would be at that time. But we were pleasantly surprised with their response to the survey questions. I've shared with you a printout of kind of our survey results for about the last nine years. And if you look at it, one of the things you'll notice is that last year's results for every single question that we asked was either the highest one ever or it was tied with the highest one ever. Meaning that there were no other results from any other year on any of those questions that was higher than what we achieved last year. A couple of the things that I'd like to point out to you, the first one is teachers are trying new practices. This was the intended purpose of QCOM, to get teachers out of their comfort zone, to get them to try new things and to get them to grow. And last year, when this was needed more than anything, the fact that we had been doing it for 12 years up to that, I think made it much more comfortable for our teachers to try new practices because they've already been doing that. And as a result, our teachers have said they feel they're better able to meet the needs of our students. They're constantly looking at their practice, not from their perspective, but from their students' perspective. Teachers have become highly reflective about their praxis. It's not just theory, but it's how does that then play out when I do it in the classroom? And again, many of our teachers' comments referred back to thinking about what they've done and how it can be doing better. The last thing I'd like to point out is that this practice of QCOM is is actually data-driven. As peer coaches, we don't tell them they're good or bad, we just tell them, here's what the data is. And then we help them make some sense out of all that. So our teachers can look at it, it's not subjective, it is more objective. And as a result, they believe the results because it's not an opinion, it's in fact. Moving on to this year, in August, we had our new group of peer coaches, many of them, about five of them, I think, were new this year. And we started in August. And right from the start, we knew this year was going to be different. In the past, we've always had a week of training where all of our peer coaches come together. We develop a real team approach to the year. And this year, we were not allowed to actually meet in person. So this training that we were doing was all done through Zoom. And I think it set the tone for the year that even though we had to do things differently, we still felt we had a very successful week. The word we came up with for this year is flexibility. We recognize that you have to be flexible. If we keep going back to it and we know things are going to change and we don't know how things are going to be necessarily a month from now, but that's okay. As long as we're flexible, we know we can adjust to it. That played out very early as our need for additional teachers in the classroom because of other teachers deciding not to come back and us needing to fill a number of positions actually took from us four of our peer coaches. So instead of having the normal thirteen, that brought us down to nine. And then we also had another peer coach who's out on maternity leave for the first half of the year. So we're short four and a half peer coaches. And so as a result of that, we had to move things around. One of the things that did help us, however, was the fact that our union and our administration got together and with permission from the state this year, they were allowed to make a reduction in the number of evaluations the staff member had to complete as well as our peer coaching sessions. So we reduced their evaluations from two to one and we reduced their peer coaching sessions from two to one. This made it possible for us to cover all nine hundred and some staff in our district with now only eight and a half peer coaches versus what would have been normally thirteen. It did cause us to have to change around who coaches who so that we could cover everyone. So unfortunately, many of those relationships that were established last year, we had to reshuffle that out. And so this year, we have a lot of teachers who are working with a new peer coach. Yet I think the fact that we focus on that, that helps us transition a little bit faster. When setting up our themes for this year, our peer coaches felt that the three themes that we had last year, equity, efficacy, and joy still should be the focus for our team going forward. We felt they were still relevant and still important to work with our teachers around. The other thing is we've learned from last year that from the training that the teachers had received on equity by embedding that into our conversations with the staff during our coaching sessions, we were able to support a lot of the work that had been done in the district. And as a result, have some really good conversations around what does equity look like? And what are some things we need to focus on in order to do a better job on that? One thing that did pop up in some of our conversations with staff this fall has been the idea that everyone feels like a first-year teacher. You know, even our veteran teachers who've taught for twenty-five plus years, being in this new model, they said, I just feel exactly like I'm a first-year teacher all over. The stress of having to create lessons and trying to figure out what's the best way to do that. We don't really have the veteran teacher that someone else can go to to gain some of that inside information. We're all rookies, so to speak, as we look going forward. I'm going to have Karen talk about these three here as we look at this year. And then I'm going to offer you the opportunity to ask any questions you might have about last year or this fall that we've started this year.
Thanks, Brad. So I wanted to frame the things that I have to say about this year around challenges and opportunities. Because I think as peer coaches, we are always looking for opportunities in the challenges. But I still want to talk about the three categories of joy and equity and efficacy. With regards to joy, staff are absolutely desperate to show joy to students and families. But it can be really hard as a peer coach to go into a coaching session and ask what brings you joy when there's tears in teachers' eyes. And peer coaches in general are very, very concerned about the well-being of our teachers amidst the challenging demands right now. We're listening. We're asking questions to help them explore their thinking and to get above it so that they can see it clearly. And we're finding small moments with staff to express or enjoy joy together. Maybe it's just savoring a piece of chocolate or going for a walk, getting away from screen time. And some teachers are then incorporating that into their work with students as well. Out of necessity, we find opportunity in our work. We're rethinking things, we're reprioritizing, we're reorganizing and finding joyful things. But whether we're teaching online or whether we're teaching with masks or serving as a staff member with students who are showing up for us that way, these are really challenging times. And at the same time, some staff are reporting that they are finding more connections with students because of smaller classes in the hybrid model. There are also some reporting that they know their students a little bit better because of the personalized individual learning that online, the online platform offers. So through cognitive coaching, we really are working with staff to find the reservoirs of resilience. But right now, some are really having a very, very difficult time finding those reservoirs. With equity, we all know that the opportunity gap and inequities are exacerbated in COVID-19 times. And this is absolutely heartbreaking for many teachers. At a time when they don't feel like they are able to deliver their best teaching, they're also seeing that it is a great need right now to be the most fabulous teacher for each and every student. Last year, we were bringing, peer coaches were bringing equity conversation and questions to the staff we work with. This year, they're bringing it up. They're saying, what am I going to do? I'm really worried about these five students. They're very concerned. And so with their peer coaches, they're we're listening to them deeply, we're providing safe space. And the staff are building up and drawing on their resources to meet the challenges. With regard to efficacy, many veteran teachers, like Brad said, they're feeling like brand-new teachers this year with all the new models and formats of learning. And some teachers actually feel like they've had to give up the things that they enjoy the most. And they're just not feeling like great teachers right now. Also, in the times of isolation, teachers have expressed a feeling of a lack of voice. But through the peer coaching aspects of QCOM, we are working with staff to gather the evidence of the meaningful work that they are in fact doing to engage their students. From Zoom hand signals to implementing very hands-on lessons in a virtual format to even incorporating new TikTok teacher resources, we've been working with them in lots of different ways. And peer coaches, we're also finding ourselves promoting well-being in a way that staff can feel efficacious, not only in their teaching, but also in their own self-care. We're working toward resilience for the long haul. So as Brad said, with the changes that are necessary in the district, peer coaches now have over a hundred staff that we each work with. So we have fewer components that we work with them on. But that also means that we have fewer opportunities for cognitive coaching. And when I think about the important work that we're engaged in, this reimagining ourselves and our work, I think about what cognitive coaching is. It's exploring the thinking behind our practices. It's transforming our effectiveness. It's becoming more self-directed with cognitive capacity for excellence both independently and as members of a community. When we talked as peer coaches, they wanted to make sure that I told you that we're deeply concerned for our staff. And we feel very strongly that peer coaching is vital to the district. And we also feel like we can do it. So together with joy, equity, efficacy, flexibility, and resilience, we are finding opportunity in challenges.
Trying to turn this.
All right, thank you. Is that the end of the presentation, Brad?
It is. I would like to give our I would like to give our board a chance to ask questions, to make comments. I'm going to try to stop my sharing here if I can figure out how to get out of here.
Right, go to the bottom where it says screen share. You got it.
Got it, perfect.
All right, thank you, Brad, and thank you, Karen, for the presentation. I'm sure that my colleagues will have lots of comments and questions. Let's start with Dr. Cohen. Any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. Pardon me, that background noise, just as I put it off mute. Do you want to go on to somebody else and then come back to me so I can mute this?
So we will skip Linda and come back to her. Let's go on to Siann Falcone.
I thank you very much for that presentation. I have a specific outcome question. How did these peer coaching teams and other professional development activities, how did that impact classroom instruction? Generally, an organization puts its money behind its values and we definitely put resources towards this. So what did the classroom get out of it, both the teachers and the students in pedagogical terms?
Well, I think, and Karen, you can jump in anytime you'd like. One of the things we see is our teachers, as a result of this, are much more willing to try new pedagogy in their classroom. We find that they're much more willing to talk to their neighboring teachers around what's working for them in the classroom. Many of our teachers are given the opportunity to be reflective, which typically in a day, they're just so busy, you know, from one thing to the next, that they really don't get a chance to think about, how did that lesson go? How could it have gone better? Am I meeting all the needs of all of my students? So it just slows down for them a couple lessons a year so that they can actually make conscious decisions about how to do it better. In addition to that, our peer coaches are really good at connecting teachers up with other teachers, either in the district or with other materials in subjects or on topics that they're interested in. Karen, do you want to add anything to that?
Sure, I can tell you as a peer coach, some of the evidence that I collect when I go in and watch a class take place. Oftentimes, teachers will ask specifically for me to collect evidence about engagement. What does that look like to them? And then we can see different students interacting in different ways. And then we often have a conversation about what might engagement look like, even though we might not recognize it that way to begin with. We might also have a conversation about clarity of instruction. Do they are students really understanding what it is that they're supposed to be doing? Sometimes I even actually interview students, especially for a PC1, for a peer coach one experience. I do a lot of interviewing of students. And that has been really enlightening for teachers to hear what the students have to say in that way. And I do think that it's very much I go into the peer coaching experience and I present it to teachers, we all do, we present it to teachers as this is an opportunity for you to take a moment. It's the gift of taking the time to really reflect deeply about your practice. And when we are so busy, it doesn't always happen that way. But this gives them that opportunity.
Thank you for the insights, especially how you're measuring efficacy. Appreciate it.
Linda Cohen.
Fine, I'm back, no phone. First of all, Brad and Karen, thank you so much. It's really interesting to see how this program has developed and that it is precisely what some of us who were in the initial phases of it hoped, is that people would really be able to reflect on their practice and slow down and try new things. So thank you, both of you, for all you're doing for the program. It also seems remarkable to me that in this situation that we're in, that the survey showed that people were either more enthusiastic or at least as enthusiastic as they've ever been about the program, which I think is really, as I said, remarkable. The one thing I'd like to clarify is about the number of sessions. Is it that each peer coach will meet with Is it that each peer coach will meet with their, the person one time or more than that? If it's only once, I think that's really hard, but I'm not sure exactly what it is. Brad or Karen, can you clarify?
So in a traditional year, you would meet with your coachee around their SMART goal, their goal for their student learning. Teachers set that at the beginning of the year, and they determine, you know, what's going to be the unit of measurement so that they can see how well they're doing towards their SMART goal. In addition to that, peer coaches will have a PC1, which is, again, it's a more narrow focus on a part of their practice. So it could be in instruction, it could be on classroom management. It could be in a professional type of area as well. But they just pick one part of that, and then they define, you know, what's the data that I want you to come in and collect? So we have a pre-conference for that. We go in and we observe. And then afterwards, we have a post-conference after they've had a chance to look at the data and reflect on the data and think about, you know, how did this go? How could I have done it differently? What might that look like? Then in a traditional year, they will have two evaluations. Each evaluation will have a pre and a post-conference. This year, they only have one of those. So they would still have a pre-conference. They'd be observed for a lesson. We would then do a post-conference when it's all said and done. And that's really the observation phase for this year. Most years, we would also have what we call a PC2. And a lot of times, teachers will do that where, again, they're meeting with their peer coach, and then they're focusing their work on an area where they would like to professionally grow. And we've encouraged our teachers over the last five to six years to make that something connected to their SMART goal. So if they have a certain area in their SMART goal, let's make your work as far as your professional development work that you're doing around that. So you can tie those two together. And there's a post-conference with that. All teachers this year will have a professional responsibilities meeting with their principal or their peer coach. We gave them the opportunity this year to choose either or. I know in some cases, the principal definitely wants to have that with the teacher, so they will. In other cases, depending on how busy they are in the springtime, that might be done with a peer coach. And that's done every year. So teachers will still have that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Any comments or questions from Sarah Johansson?
Hello, thank you. My question was also similar to Linda's question. So thanks, Brad, for explaining all of that. And then I just also had a comment too for both of you. Karen, thanks for joining us tonight. And Brad, thanks for being here. It's always great to hear our positive reports of high, of high numbers and leading things. And I think even in the, with last year, making our numbers be at the top that they've been over the 13 years are tied is really significant. But at the same time, I think what I really appreciated, Karen, was your honesty and your directness. And I think as a board, we too really share concerns for our teachers. We share concerns for our peer coaches and for each of our administrators. And so I guess my only question for you is, and for my board colleagues, is really, you know, can we continue to work together to find ways that we can, that we can support one another and make the best of this COVID year, which is clearly taking a toll on our students and our families and our teachers? So thank you for your directness and for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. I feel, I feel lucky this year to be in this role because I feel like it's a powerful role at this time. And we all have our roles in, you know, the various places that we serve. And I do appreciate that in each of those roles, it feels like we are really trying to come together because that is the way that we'll make it through. So, thanks.
Thank you. Chris McCullough.
No questions really, just a compliment to both of you and the rest of the peer coaches, the other seven and a half peer coaches. I mean, what you've been able to do this year under really, really difficult circumstances is amazing. And to also, you know, the ratios being as tough as they are and dealing with some of the, you know, the mental health and emotional health challenges that you've had, Karen, with your, with your teachers and the other peer coaches have had with their teachers. I just want to compliment you on the hard work that you've done. And to be able to keep focused on joy. At the same time, you're focused on equity and efficacy, I think is a really great focus to have, although it can be very, very difficult at times, as you both know better than anybody else. So no questions. I just wanted to compliment you both. It's a heavy lift, as we've been saying all along, and I appreciate all of your help.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Cheryl Polzin.
Thank you, and thank you, Karen and Brad. I also share my thanks and compliments to you program. I did have a couple of quick questions. So the survey that goes out, and everybody has given such high marks for sort of the efficiency and the benefits of the program. How many of the teachers actually fill out that survey? Is it everybody or a certain percent, or do all the teachers respond to that?
So we send it out every year. We send it to every staff member. We shoot for every teacher, but I think typically, we're a little over 50%, close to 60%. We've been there the last few years, and that's what we've been told from K-12 Insights is that's a really good representation. That's a, we can, we can look at that data and be pretty sure that it's pretty accurate with that number. So we would love to have more feedback. What's especially interesting to read are the comments that teachers are, and some of those are in the Q Comp annual report that I think you have a copy of, where we put them in some of the places. You know, we have 500 and some teachers who make comments. And we just pulled some of them from that, but those are really helpful for us, maybe even more so than the quantified data that we get.
Great. And so how are the AAW classes being handled this year? Are you signing people up for those things? Are the teachers finding them to be almost a godsend? Or are they thinking, oh, I don't have time for this? Or how is that going this year?
So we had our, we had our class approval committee meet about, it's almost a month ago now, approving courses. We had, I believe at that time, 28 courses that were proposed. There were a couple of them that had to be pulled because they did not get enough interest in them. And some of them, there were duplicates. But we had, I believe, over 20 courses that are being taught in addition to other people who just wanted to do study groups. We did hear this year from a number of teachers, more than in the past, that they just said, I have too much on my plate to really do this. One of the requirements we had for our courses and our study groups this year is that they needed to be done remotely. We wanted to make sure that people felt safe in taking the course or the study group. And so they're allowed to do it through Zoom. A lot of teachers liked that because then they could go home and they could still take the course. And it actually widened up some of the hours that we can do those.
Okay, well, very good. The other question I had was how the equity piece is getting braided in with the work of the peer coaches? And Karen, you had said that a lot of the questions or a lot of the discussion is being generated by your teachers versus you bringing it to them. So do you see that as helpful? Or do peer coaches find that that's a manageable add to their schedule? I mean, having 100 teachers, I know this year is sort of an anomaly because you're down, you know, or whatever it was. How is that working into? Is it a natural sort of hand in hand?
Yeah, thanks for that question. I think equity is everywhere. I think it is our work. We're a public school, and I don't see it as a separate thing. And I think in peer coaching and in helping people consider their thinking and, and just their impact that they have in their work, I think equity has to be a part of it. I can, I can give you some examples of some of the questions that we ask as peer coaches. Things like, what assumptions do I have about my students that could be misconceptions? So I might present that, you know, what might be misconceptions on your part of your students? Or how am I creating and building on meaningful relationships with my students? Or can, you know, what are the strengths of a student? Perhaps someone is talking about a student, and we want to be able to enlarge the picture that that teacher has of that student to include some assets and some strengths so that then they can better work with them. So I think, or this one, I think is a super interesting one. Who are you and how did your own identity show up in the lesson today? So that people, people are aware of the role and who they are and what they bring into the work, and then that every single student in the room brings something. So maybe that helps kind of give a little bit of a picture?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Cheryl, I think one of the benefits we have now is we've been focusing on equity for a little bit of time. And having Solvay, who is a past peer coach and understands this process, have her moving, or having her moved into this new role last year. She talked a lot about soil and seeds. And I think the training, we had four trainings that all of our staff and our whole district did. It gave us some common experience, and it really helped prepare the soil for some of the seeds that our peer coaches then planted in their heads around these questions. I think they were more prepared to really think about those questions. So it's not so much that it's extra, like you were talking earlier about an extra stuff. I think it's just now, like Karen said, it's a part of our work. It is the work. And our teachers are seeing it not as something outside of what they do, but a part of what they do.
Okay, well, again, I'm so pleased that we have this program, and I think we've done it really well. And kudos to you guys for keeping that quality up. And I hope that it's proving to be, you know, a real asset to the teachers, and they feel more supported by that.
Any questions or comments from Bonita Lucky?
I just wanted to echo a lot of things that have already been said. And Brad and Karen, thank you so much for just providing the information. Probably what resonated with me the most, Karen, as you were talking, is just the vulnerability that teachers are willing to show. And when you think about the willingness to be vulnerable, healing can really start taking place. So thank you very much for sharing.
Great. And I also just want to echo all those thank yous. I think that our Q Comp program in the district is a treasure. And I think the way we've been able to grow it over the years and really personalize the professional development for our teachers is just a strength of our district. So thank you so much. I think it's important for the board to know that our veteran teachers have reported feeling like they're first-year teachers. And I also think it's important for the board to hear that peer coaches are concerned about the well-being of our teachers. Thank you for sharing that information, and we really appreciate your honesty. I have one quick question to wrap it up. I don't know if it's Karen or Brad, but I'm wondering if one of you could just give kind of a brief summary of the training that the peer coaches did with Dr. Holly in the Center for Culturally Responsive Teaching and Learning and how that impacted the practice?
Karen, do you want to talk about how that impacted your practice, maybe from a personal perspective?
Sure. Yeah, with cultural responsive teaching and learning, I guess it's hard for me in some ways to separate how that particular thing impacted my practice because it was another step in lots of things that have impacted my practice. But I do, I do think that it was an opportunity for us as peer coaches to do some learning together. And that was super impactful. It also, I think anytime that we can do learning together, it gives us shared terminology. And that helps us to continue the conversation and move forward. So although perhaps there were not as many new ideas in it for me personally, I think that for us to have that learning together was, was powerful. And then when we are talking with staff, we can say something, and then they go and they talk to their PLC or to their team about it. And they then carry on that same, those same questions, as well as that same terminology.
Well, that's great. Thank you, Karen. Well, thanks again to both of you for being here and presenting on Q Comp. I apologize that we kept putting you off, Brad, but I think maybe it was helpful to have you come today so we could hear a little bit about how things are going this school year. Thanks again for being here.
Thank you for the invite, and we always love coming and being a part of this district.
Thanks a lot. All right. Next on our agenda, we have two items under Finance and Business. The first is Facilities Update, so I will hand it off to Mr. Westrom.
Yes, madam chair, members of the board and members of the community as well. As you're aware, the school board has two very important committees, the Finance Committee of the School Board and the Facility Committee of the School Board. And we meet on a monthly basis, and we go into a lot of details in our meetings. And we thought it would make sense to get the full board up to speed on some of the information that's been shared and some of the discussions that have occurred at those meetings. So what I would first like to do is get the board an update on our Facilities Committee meetings. You're probably aware that we have our construction partners of World Architects and Engineers and Kraus Anderson. And this evening, I've got Lene Schoen and Scott McQueen joining us from World Architects. And I think what we'll have them do is we'll actually have Lene make initial comments regarding the needs assessment that was identified in June, just kind of going through our next steps. And then we'll also go through a little bit of the timeline associated with seeking voter approval to finance some of these needs. And once again, our Facility Committee and Board members get into great detail. At this point, we just want to give a broad overview. So with that, Lene, I do believe I've made you a co-host, so you can share any documents unless you'd like me to?
Sure. Well, if you wouldn't mind, that would be great. If we could do, you want to roll into, I'll do the introduction part and then go into the potential summary of needs to wrap that part up? Or did you want to do milestone schedule first?
You know what? Let's do the facility summary of potential. So I'll pull that up.
Great. Madam Chair, members of the board, Wayzata Community, thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate the opportunity to continue the discussion on the facilities assessment work that has been happening well over a year now. And we're here tonight just to continue the conversation in regards to the process and the progress for the facilities and analysis, excuse me, work that we've been doing. And so first and foremost, just a reminder that we were in front of you last June now with the wrap-up of the nine months' worth of work, where the board had asked the design team to reach out to all schools and administrators in the district to really get a big-picture district-wide for facilities needs. And at that point, we shared some very preliminary summary of work. And at that point, we've shared some, um, very preliminary summary of work at that point. And then, um, since June, we have been continuing to, um, fine tune and finesse and gather more information on potential facilities needs that were a result of that study. And some of the groups that have participated in sharing information and processing, providing input are, um, not only your administrative team, um, your SLT group, um, Jim has brought great, has invited us to the CFAC meetings. So we've gotten some community feedback, um, on this work and those can, those discussions do continue. So most recently, um, we had a great discussion with your facilities committee of the board. And, um, this month we reviewed again a draft of the summary of potential needs that the district has, um, been discussing. And we, so we thought tonight we would go through with you, um, just a very high level of the topics that continue to be, um, discussed and evaluated. And as a part of this process, um, as we're going to discuss here in a little bit, we're at that point where we're continuing to define the needs of the district. We'll slowly roll into solutions. So we will be back in front of you with some of that facilities committee work as well. Um, as you prepare for, uh, a potential bond referendum question either in the fall, um, of 2021 or, um, winter of 22. So with that, uh, the document that Jim has shared here, we've got, um, really summarized by a few categories that tie directly back into that facilities assessment report that we provided. And the first topic there is middle schools. And so some of the issues, um, that had been brought up and discussed, uh, through the process of a middle school task force. I just want to remind the group that Jill Johnson did, uh, lead a group along with other teaching and learning leaders and the, um, administrators and principals at each middle school, um, site to discuss and reevaluate and recommit to the, the vision for middle schools. And here are some of the facilities, um, issues that came up. And the number one issue was additional capacity needs at the middle school level. So tying that back to the enrollment projections, um, that were, have been discussed. And really the, the summary of that is that we know that, uh, there will be middle school enrollment pressure in the next five years. And, um, with the boundaries as they are drawn right now, central middle school is the school that will be receiving a lot of that enrollment pressure. And so, um, if you just look at the summary here, we've got some numbers and, and verbiage here that explains that. But to the tune of about seventeen hundred and sixty-one students at CMS. The next facility issue that that group discussed and that we've seen already is maintaining a comparable experience at always at a middle schools. So as the district continues to develop the encore offerings and or there are, if there are additions or renovations that happen that, um, that group has said, please maintain a comparable experience at always at a middle schools. Um, and then a topic also that we have discussed at the facilities committee is, um, the possibility of maintaining the middle school feeder school concept. So, um, the conversation on that is that you have elementary schools, whole elementary schools that directly feed into your middle schools. Through our ten plus years of planning with the district, um, that system has held true. So that's something that's up for discussion at this point, um, or recommitment to that feeder school concept. And keeping in mind that the district has continued to add to the elementary schools and put two more elementary schools online. So the number of facilities that you have has been changing as you've been growing. And then the last issue for middle schools is, um, the thought of discussing and including, um, some solutions for emerging and changing programs at the middle schools. A lot of discussion around, um, not only the encore offerings at the middle schools, but also thinking about that middle school level teaching and learning best practices and thinking about how those encore classes feed into the high school. So those are a few of just kind of a high level discussion and a reminder of the topics at the middle school level. And then the next topic is at the high school. And, and the big topic there is the additional capacity needs at the high school level. I do want to just remember the board and, and those who are, um, participating in this presentation that a lot of the numbers that you're seeing here are, um, enrollment and projections based on last year's information. We all know that we've been in a COVID environment here and, um, enrollments have fluctuated a little bit and that type of thing. And so we continue to work with the district now that we have, um, October one enrollment numbers to continue to fine tune the numbers to make sure that we've got that commitment there. Um, and then at the high school level, also emerging and changing programs. So, um, making sure that we're continuing to discuss with the administration there on, on what's coming and how the facilities can support those programs. Elementary schools, uh, the district has made a lot of recent investments in capacity there. And so really the topic at that grade level is spaces for emerging and changing programs. Thinking about redefining satellite kitchens and some, um, flexible support spaces at that, at that level. I'm sorry, Jim, did you want to jump to another? Did you want to jump to your numbers?
No, I didn't. Um, I'm having trouble with three screens. So I tried to get them off.
All right. Otherwise just jump in and I can pause. The next topic is community education and early childhood. Um, again, recognizing that as your student population grows, there is a direct correlation to, um, the, um, need and demand for early childhood population and serving those kiddos as well. Special services, um, we heard that, um, there have been recent, uh, moves in regards to bringing some offsite special services back into district facilities. And so that is an ongoing and changing, um, initiative and continuing to talk about long-term solutions for those programs. And then if you could just, there we go. Um, district administration. A lot of discussion of the facility issue there is strategically, the district has been strategically, uh, locating and then relocating district administration departments, um, in a variety of temporary spaces within the district over the last 10 to 15 years. And the thought there is to, um, making sure that we've got the appropriate current and future staffing projections for each department. And all of that's in alignment with student growth and, um, the suitability of the current location. Most of the groups listed there now in the, uh, new Oakwood addition. District transportation and storage, the district has just basically outgrown the bus transportation and storage facilities that you have now. So, um, looking for solutions there. And then community activity space, um, there were some great conversations with, um, a lot of your youth organizations and community organizations and understanding that as the student population grows and more housing comes online, that there is also extra pressure on some of those community education spaces, meaning field availability and activity space within the district. And then technology, um, we heard a little bit about technology tonight in your previous reports and continuing to invest in current and future district technological initiatives. Obviously thinking about your redundancy, thinking about your, um, access to, um, networking and wireless capabilities. You know, a lot of that has changed, especially over this last year. Safety and security, continuing to support best practices regarding like sites, traffic, drop off, building entrances. You've done a lot of work towards this, uh, but continuing the, um, to support replacement cycles and really pausing to think about pandemic learnings on that, under that topic. Furniture standards, um, the district has made great investments there over the past five years. Um, and thinking about, um, continuing to implement your standards in all facilities. The middle schools and some adult spaces have not yet been addressed. And then obviously, um, furniture to better support online learning and pandemic opportunity challenges. So a lot of these categories, there's an opportunity to pause and reflect on the learnings thus far. And then sustainability, net zero and energy efficiency. Thinking about, um, how your facilities should be in alignment with your sustainability and carbon reduction goals and energy use. So that's the nickel tour of the last year's worth of work. Just to kind of refresh your memories on, on where we are with that work. And as we prepare to start exploring solutions for some of these needs.
Thank you, Lene. Um, I appreciate you, uh, being so concise and getting through that list. It, uh, actually is, uh, pretty, a pretty comprehensive list of needs that we've identified. And of course our next steps are to go through and prior, prioritize those needs and make sure they're in alignment with the district's mission, vision, values and strategic directions. And as Lene had also mentioned, um, Jill Johnson and our teaching and learning team, uh, will play a critical role in helping us identify those needs. Cheryl Polzin is actually the board member who's the chair of the facility committee as well. Cheryl, um, I'd welcome any comments from you. If you have any, otherwise, uh, we'll open it up for any questions at this point.
I really don't have anything right now. I think if we go on to the, just the different choices of timelines, unless people have questions about the list of the, you know, potential needs.
Okay. I haven't seen any hands. So, um, in the, in the
Oh, oh, sorry. I thought Andrew was going to call on us. Can I ask one quick question? Thanks, Lene. It seems like so long ago that June was, right? That we, the, and then what did we get it in July? And it seems like a lifetime ago, but it was so helpful to get this refresher. I love, um, that you highlighted that we're taking some, some, uh, time to reflect and pause on, on our new normal and, and the impacts of, of hybrid learning and, and all of that. Is there any formal, I mean, and we just heard about sort of teacher and staff capacity. Are, are there formal ways that we're collecting information for that or are we doing it more informally? Or, um, how are we, um, collecting those very important data points?
Sure. I can, I can take that. I think, um, we've had these conversations at the facilities committee. So, um, Jim and Cheryl, feel free to jump in. But there's a lot of data points because not only do we have this COVID effect and we've got our October one numbers. And I'll let Jim speak to those. Um, but you're also a district that continues to grow. So, um, you have a lot of different factors to consider when you, um, lock in on, um, what your projections will look like. And Jim, I believe you are inviting Hazel to the table again to reevaluate some of those projections.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. Maybe before we move on to the enrollment, I'll run through and see if anyone has any other questions for Lene. Any questions from Linda Cohen? Oh, sorry, Linda.
No, no questions.
Okay. Um, any questions from Cian Falconer?
No questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Sarah, any other questions? No. Chris McCullough?
Uh, no, thanks, Lene.
Cheryl Polzin?
Nothing right now. Thanks.
Bonita Lucky?
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Um, then I think we're ready to move on to our next agenda item. Mr. Westrom, I'll hand it over to you to talk about the facilities update and enrollment. Sorry, finance enrollment.
Yes, no, madam chair. Um, yes. And at this point I might invite Kristen Tolson to make a few remarks. She is our director of administrative services and she is just, she and her team have just done an incredible job with our enrollment. Um, I just want to make sure you can see something on the screen that shows, um, each of our buildings and each of our grades in the district.
Yep, we can see it.
Okay. So, um, for the benefit of all school board members, I know that CFAC members have seen this. And I believe our facility, uh, board members have seen this. And, um, just want to make sure that everybody has seen this. So as of October first, that is the date that, uh, ends up being a measurement date for the district's enrollment. And that will drive a lot of the planning of the school district. And, um, it should be no surprise, uh, because we haven't given you updates. And because it's happening throughout the state and throughout the country, uh, a number of families have chosen not to send their students to kindergarten this fall. So the key messages that I'd like to point out is that kindergarten, um, enrollment is about two hundred and ten students less than what we projected. Um, however, kindergarten is not mandatory in the state of Minnesota. So under the, um, enrollment requirements, I think a student needs to be seven and then they need to be enrolled in a public school. So we often see many of our kindergarten families take advantage of other opportunities. If you look at the other grades, if you look at grades first through fifth, you probably notice a scattering, but nothing significant or trend worthy, um, other than the, a number of students from each of our buildings in each of our grades, um, chose another option for this year. And then if you look at our middle schools, we're seeing a little bit of a decline in each of, or a, a, a little bit of, students not showing up in sixth and seventh grade, which are normally the times when the migration from the non-public schools into the ways that a public schools occurs. So we're thinking that perhaps, uh, there were some other, um, options for those families as well. And then once again, our high school ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade, uh, the enrollment is, is solid. So just wanted to point that out. This information will, uh, play an important part in our planning. And in the document that Lene had just shared with you, you probably saw a lot of yellow highlighted items. So, um, what we're planning to do is we're engaging the services of Hazel Reinhardt and also tapping into Kristen Tolson's expertise and detailed orientation of gathering information from our families. And I think Amy Parnell is also working with Peter Leatherman or Morrison Leatherman, uh, to do some survey to determine, um, if this is a, uh, short-term impact or if this might have some long-term, uh, effects. So Kristen, I'm wondering if you, um, have any remarks that you would like to make? Or should we just open it up for questions at this point?
I just wanted to added to add your comments, Jim, that we are also overlaying that with information from our cities. So I've been in contact with all of our cities that are currently growing to see if they're seeing, uh, realization in their projections. And so that'll help us know that whether this is kind of a pandemic slowdown or if it is, you know, families making different choices. We are doing a data mining and working through our numbers right now to find the families that were with us this year or last year, but are not with us this year. And then also doing a, a deep dive on our kindergarten numbers of the students that we originally reached out to about 10 months ago, asking if they would be joining us. And since that time, we have not seen them. But we're going back to analyze whether they were held back, home schooled, all the different choices that they may have made, to kind of help quantify these are projections, but also to help us look at what our kindergarten numbers may be for next year. Thank you.
Yep. And I would just like to thank Kristen too. I think when she said she was reaching out to the city, she's going to get building permit information. Uh, you're probably aware that there's still a significant construction going on in the district. And so that will help us to determine how many families are still, um, building new construction within the district as well. So, okay, with that, um, Andrea, I'll let you see if there are any questions or any remarks.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Kristen. Um, I apologize. I moved on to enrollment before we had a chance to look at the document, the working document on the bond election options. Um, I think all of these items do kind of fit together though. So maybe if people have comments or questions, about the options for the election timelines, that could also be part of this conversation. Does that sound okay, Jim? Or do you want to go over that document at all?
Yeah, actually I'm glad that, uh, you, you mentioned enrollment because I, enrollment was going to be part of that conversation. But I think enrollment kind of shows a little bit of the ambiguity, uh, that the pandemic might be, um, causing in decision-making processes. And so I think to look at enrollment just briefly and then move on to the timelines would, is a natural progression.
Okay, good. Good. Sorry about that.
No, that was good on your part.
All right. Well, let's go through and see if anyone has any questions. Um, Linda, any questions?
No, thanks for the charge. It's very helpful.
Cian?
One small question, um, for Jim. Do you have a version of this chart where you show, uh, the increases as well as the decreases? Because these look like it's net together. For example, Oakwood kindergarten down nineteen. Well, or for example, I think might be better would be the Oakwood second grade. So that, um, that might show any other Oakwooders who came into the district and then the students who we projected to go into second grade, um, decide not to. I, I assume you don't have it like here, but could we take a look at that in a future meeting?
Um, I'm going to ask Kristen to make a remark, but we do have that information. We do know how many students actually progressed to the next grade. And then we do know the numbers that have moved out and the numbers that have come in. Kristen, I think we call that mobility and I think you and Hazel will be able to gather that information.
Um, we'll be able to do probably some trends, um, as, as, um, Chase and Amy and Jim and everyone have heard me say, um, many times, this is net and what this doesn't reflect that each one of these is probably two. And what this doesn't reflect that each one of these is probably two or three times the number of movement. So for example, three additional kids at Northwoods in third grade probably isn't three. It's probably six new and three that left. I mean, there's a lot of an internal movement from Birchview to Northwoods. So it's not a straight line. I mean, our families don't move in at K and stay till grade 12. There's just a lot of ins and outs that compile and give us great trends. But our, you know, a net of a lot of movement. But we can help figure that out. And maybe you and I could talk and see kind of what you're looking, what data you're seeking.
Thank you. That's what I was. I was expecting that it was a lot more fluctuation than just a six or a three. Yeah, there was a lot more up and other families chose to leave, but we're all we've always been such an incredibly popular district. COVID or not, people move here for our schools. Thank you. I'll take it offline with you later.
Okay, and as our families age and things change, but then when a family leaves Birchview and may move to Gleeson Lake, another family moves back into the Birchview boundaries. And so we may trade a second and a third grader for a first and a fifth grader. There may be no overall change to Gleeson Lake or to Birchview, but the grade configurations change. And that happens far more frequently than you would imagine. We every day have families that are moving within our district but staying in ways out of schools.
Interesting. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
All right. That is interesting. Sarah Johansson?
Thank you. I don't think I have a comment. I just your question, but I do have a comment. I think we've seen these numbers a number more than once, and I'm just struck with this chart at the actual numbers of classrooms that are probably represented in the kindergarten numbers. And with absent of virtue, we probably have almost at least we are probably are down at least one class at every building with one being over two classes. And so I just am looking at that with the thought of how we will staff for next year, not knowing if those first graders will will be returning or not. So just an observation. Thanks.
Chris McCullough?
Nothing from me. Thanks.
Cheryl Polzin?
No questions. I just wanted to say thanks for all the work because, you know, having this tidy little chart that represents 100 moves is, you know, we know how hard you're working to try and keep a handle on this so that we can, as best we can, plan for the future. So thank you for all that work.
Thanks, Cheryl. Anything from Bonita Lucky?
None for me. Thank you.
All right. And I have one quick question just to build on Sarah's comment about the difficulty of predicting what we'll need next year for space and staffing when we're not sure whether those kindergartners are gonna come next year as kindergartners or if they're gonna come next year as first graders. My question is, and I thought I remembered hearing something about this in facilities. Is it possible to utilize the services of Morris Leatherman to do some some surveys that we can find out where some of those students are or what their plans are for the future? Is there a way to try to get some of that information?
Madam Chair, members of the board, actually, that did come up in a conversation with Amy Parnell and Peter Leatherman and others who were involved in a conversation last Thursday, I believe. And we do have the ability to contact families and do a survey to find out at the kindergarten level. I will also mention, and Kristen probably can add additional information, but we normally begin the kindergarten registration process right after the first of the year. Kristen, any comments?
That's exactly the case. We very quickly will start to pull together our our draft numbers for next year. And we have already begun to do a deep data dive for Peter Leatherman as a over the weekend or that we are already been able to secure the names or look through different lists to come up with 200 families that were with us last year and with us this year, but not having moved from their current address. So of course, just because you're with us last year, not with us this year, doesn't really mean anything if you move. So we had to pull out all the moves out of state, out of the district and know that they're still residing at Urbendale or Vinewood or wherever they're at. So we are working on that list right now, but already have identified about 200 families that can be surveyed.
Got it. You're on it. Thank you, Kristen. Appreciate that. Okay, I think that wraps up our discussion about the enrollment at this point. I'm sure we'll continue talking about that. But Jim, do you want to move on and talk to us a little about the internal working document on the bond election timelines?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a reminder that these documents are included in Board Book. So you can look along with you or the general audience can as well. The next item that I have, I am going to just make a few remarks. Whoops, I went too big. Make a few remarks and then I'll have Lene from Wool talk about some of the strengths and weaknesses with each of these dates. But it has been a very, very a very detailed conversation has been had vetting the timelines. You're probably aware that originally we were thinking that we might be approaching our voters and identifying needs for facilities much earlier than next November, November of 2021. We've engaged the work, the expertise of Citizens Finance Advisory Council members. CFAC, we've discussed this both internally and with other groups this morning. As a matter of fact, we also had stakeholders, the board stakeholders group discuss this matter. And we've also looked at the election timelines, too. With the new early voting, that actually adds a little more complexity to the voting and how a school district and a school board can engage its community. So from a facility and construction standpoint, the two days before you, November of 2021 election or February 2022 election will both yield the same results as to when the facilities will be available for use. And you'll notice that the the capacity at the middle school could be relieved by fall of 2025. Just a reminder, board members are probably fully aware of this. The community may not. But the district is not allowed to issue bonds without seeking and and obtaining voter approval. And districts have very little financing mechanisms for building full buildings. And so part of the reason for this discussion is so that we can do our planning to engage our community, to make sure we've identified needs and maintain that trust and competency and community engagement that's so valuable. And that creates such a positive relationship between the board, the school district, and the community. So with that, Lene, if you're comfortable, I'd like to ask you to make some remarks about these two timelines.
Sure. I I think you've covered almost all of the comments that we usually use when we when we look at this tool. But I can just reiterate, Jim, that part of the reason we're sharing the information that we're sharing with the board tonight is to keep everyone on track for the ability to do the November 2021 referendum if you choose to do so. And what I mean by that is that you can see in that first column. And I don't know, Jim, if you can highlight that the Community Task Force would likely be engaged in that January timeline. So here we are in October. And so this fall is being dedicated to processing the needs and potential solutions as the district prepares to engage that Community Task Force. So whichever date you choose, we can be nimble. And I think we've heard the word pivot tonight throughout this process, but we want to make sure that we keep you on track to be able to have that information prepared and ready if you choose to go for that November 2021 election. And I think you've already pointed out that a common topic with a lot of districts now is thinking about that early voting. And so we've added that line item at the bottom of the page there, understanding that if you have that November 9th, 2021, or that February 2022 bond election, that early voting could start as soon as two months ahead of time. We do not know of any state statute that has changed or anything that we need to think about. So we just tweaked this schedule through a minor format, Jim. And we've just, thank you. And then we've, so we just moved up that that survey number three up by just a month so that it coincides with that early voting. So you're testing your community with some of those final questions and final topics and doing that brush fire survey but right before you head into early voting. You asked me to go over benefits and challenges. You know, the dates aren't too far apart. There are evolving pandemic considerations that I think will still be evolving throughout the school year. So, you know, I think those are factors for both states.
I think Yes, thank you. Thank you, Lene. And I'm having trouble with my three screens again. I did want to also point out, though, with the early voting, a number of conversations have transpired, beginning with our facility committee meeting, but then also working with Morris Leatherman and their team, and then also working internally, looking at the early voting that occurs. Am I still sharing? I am already. Okay. So I do want to point out real quickly that this is information regarding the special elections. And this is for 2020, but I also want to point out that these numbers will be very similar in 2021. And I'm gonna see if I can make this even bigger. With the way that the early voting works now, this will be the similar. November 3rd of 2020 would be very similar to November 3rd of 2021. If you look, we actually need to have absentee ballots available early September and voters would have the ability to begin voting as early as the first or second week of the school year. As you know, many times when we're approaching our voter voters in our community with that engagement, summer probably usually isn't the best time to do that. We usually do that with the half of the school year. So you can see that some people will potentially vote before we've even had the chance to engage with the the community or or give them the information that they'll need to make an informed vote. So in a a number of our meetings that we've had, both internally and this morning with our board stakeholders group, November of 2021 is looking less favorable from a community engagement standpoint. So I do want to just quick point that out that a number of those conversations have occurred. And once again, with Chase's strategic leadership team, that would be the internal team. And also looking at all the work that our community, or I mean, our staff will need to do based on the timelines that we've looked at before. It is looking highly unlikely that November of 2021 would be the ideal time to seek approval of bond referendum. So I'll stop sharing because I've got too many things.
Thank you, Mr. Westrom. Should I move on to questions?
Yes, please.
All right, great. Thanks for that information. Any questions or comments from Linda Cohen?
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment. It would seem to me with the uncertainty of the pandemic and and just what people's frame of mind is going to be that the later date is is the obvious one that that would be important to use.
Thanks, Linda. Cian Falconer?
Thank you for doing the work. As a parent with children who will be absolutely impacted by the CMS crunch and that date range, I appreciate the effort you've put in to figure out how to do this as early as possible to avoid that. But at the same time, I agree with Director Cohen, I'm not sure that we've figured out all the pieces of the pandemic yet. So I too think that your logic towards the later date of February of 2022 makes more sense, even though it will crunch even particularly my children.
Thanks, Cian. Sarah Johansson?
So I'm gonna take it a different way, just a little bit. And and it and it does zero in on the on the early voting, too. That and and the workload of our staff in running an election. And my only question is, is we're gonna have early voting on on August or September 18th of no of that year anyway, because we have a school board election. So our community members, and unless we've changed that, our community members will be coming in to vote for that. So I'm wondering about knowing the amount of work that it goes in with our staff members to run elections out of the admin. I'm wondering about because this will essentially have us running an election from September through November and then a pause of about five weeks or six weeks to December 27th again, when the absentee ballots would start for the February election. And I know we did this before. We did it, what, seven years ago or eight? It'll be eight years that we had done it. I don't think we had early voting in the same way eight years ago that we did that we do now. And that does seem to be an issue. The second thing is, is what kind of community feedback would we potentially get if our community knows that we're very clearly gearing up for an election? And then we ask them to come in to vote in that in that November election. And then also then come in to vote just six weeks later, which is gonna feel like a blink of an eye for this for this election. So, you know, lots of committees have, I'm surely talked about this, but I'm just wondering about those cautions.
Thank you, Sarah. Chris McCullough?
I'll agree with Linda's original point as Cian then reiterated. To me, it's and Sarah, I think, makes some very good points in terms of the administrative work that goes into the elections. To me, it's about the timing around the pandemic. And I just think that asking our community in one to two months' time to start thinking about a task force around facilities is it just seems a little early to me. And so to the extent we can push that back and learn what we can learn about the evolution of the pandemic in those extra two or three months, I think is better approach. And it doesn't, it doesn't change the opening date of the of any school or any capacity relief that we end up with. Both scenarios that we're looking at are fall of 2025. So I would advocate for the Feb. 2022 election.
Thanks, Chris. Cheryl Polzin?
Yeah, these are really great things to noodle with. I think that being that the February 2022 election doesn't delay the opening. Like, like Chris was just saying, we have opening in fall of 25 in either of these election dates. The February one does provide us a little breathing space, you know, now during during the pandemic. Because really, we're not, how are we gonna engage a task force in December about this? And, you know, the administration, their capacity, you know, and bandwidth to launch into that in December. I just really I would hesitate to do that. So I we I know there's only a few election dates and I and I hate to even ask the question. But I mean, is February the drop dead last date that we can vote on this and still open in fall of 25? Because I know there's only certain like four dates per year.
Jim, could you pull those dates up again? And Scott, you'll have to help remind me, but I think we can still make it if we do. The March, isn't there an April date? I think where it starts getting really iffy is if we push it back to that August date. Because if we recall, we were just considering a May date for 24. Well, you could consider the May date for a year later.
Yeah, and this is for 2020. We will get information for 2021, but it should mirror this fairly closely.
It's it's the August date when we start both Carl Sanderson, you know, start getting a little timid on being able to do the full projects at one time. Though that August would trigger partial that partial opening discussion again.
And I and I hate to even bring that up because this has been delayed from our original conversations. And and because of COVID and a little bit of uncertainty around our enrollment numbers and things like that, we we could possibly, you know, that year that it kind of got pushed back is is likely to be fine. But I wouldn't want to see it go any further than that if our because these students are in our system and we know they're coming. And I want them to all have a high quality experience. So but I think we might want to think about because of those things that because of those things that Sarah had said about engaging the community, you know, right after a school board election, then all of a sudden, you know, four weeks later, we're talking about another election on this other thing, and it it does get a little bit muddy as far as being able to message properly so that everybody understands. Thank you for the information.
Thanks, Cheryl. Any feedback from Bonita Lucky?
Yeah, I think I would just go and I've heard everything that was said, so thank you for sharing in that. But for me, my thoughts would be the latest we could push it back would be beneficial. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonita, and and thanks, everyone, for all of the thoughtful comments and questions. And it sounds to me as if it's a discussion that we need to keep having as conditions continue to change and there continue to be lots of uncertainties. I want to thank Jill Schwint, because I think you are the one who did all the digging on really understanding what this early voting might do to our timeline. So thanks for that, Jill. But other than that, I don't think I have any other questions other than Jim and and Chase. Do you kind of feel that you have what you need from the board for today? And we'll just continue talking about this at future meetings?
Yes, I do feel that way. I'll let Jim respond on his own behalf, but I appreciate hearing the inputs and insights from board members and staff and our strategic partners at WOLD. It's very helpful to process. It's each time I listen through a conversation like this, it kind of helps me find a greater comfort level with going a little deeper into the the future with moving forward with this. There's a lot of unknowns that we'll still need to discover when the school year starts, which as the timeline showed. Next year will be a couple of weeks before early voting starts, and we'll still won't even have hit the October first official count of our students yet. So I like this timeline, and I think it will give us an opportunity to do a good job of planning and also learning early in the school year and revising or modifying if the data or information would lead us to do that. Jim?
Yes, thank you, members of the board. I think we have the information that we need. So our construction partners, WOLD, and our other construction partners, Crowe Sanderson and the administration will get together and we'll come up with timelines that are more refined for looking at February and perhaps even looking at sometime after February of two thousand twenty two. I think at the same time, our partners at WOLD and Crowe Sanderson work very closely and have in the past with Bart Nickel and with Peter Leatherman and Amy Parnell. So I think what we'll do is we'll actually have a joint meeting of all those teams, and we'll come up with a timeline that matches each of those strategies. So thank you. This was a very useful meeting today, and I appreciate it. So.
Thank you, Mr. Westrom. All right, well, that concludes our agenda items for our work session for October twenty six, twenty twenty.
Madam Chair, can I add one more thing?
Of course.
Yep. So I did have one financing, so I do have one more financing that I'd like to share just.
I apologize. Okay.
Yep, so I didn't want to put it out there because it's probably not the most favorable news, but it it's a financial matter. So typically, we go, we ask the board. We we actually will talk about things at a work session before we bring it to the board. I just want to share that due to the pandemic, we have pretty much wrapped up our audit for last year. And I'm not going to go into the details of the audit, but I do want to mention that our food service fund ended up going into a deficit position. And I will be asking the board to transfer two hundred and fifty thousand or just under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund to the food service one. And I will go into great detail with our finance committee about that. But just wanted, once again, to thank Michelle Sagadell and the entire Culinary Express staff for their important work in distributing, you know, hundreds and thousands of meals to our families through the distance learning program. And we'll go into greater detail, but I I need the board to pass a resolution at the November board meeting to make that transfer. I will also just make a quick remark that the Community Service Fund also had a deficit, but they were able to cover that deficit with their internal fund balances. So their deficit ended up being about one point one million dollars, and that was largely attributed to the governor's executive order to provide free daycare to essential workers. And once again, for those members who are familiar with our LAC Legislative Action Committee and other advocates for school districts and finance related matters for school districts. There was some proposed legislation that would potentially provide some relief, but we don't have that at this point. So just the last thing, the general fund, as we were anticipating, we had a number of additional costs, but we had a number of additional savings. And so we're within just several less than a percent of what our projections were in the general fund. So just wanted to give you those quick numbers in case anybody had any questions, but we'll go to the finance committee in detail in that year November work session. Auditors or representatives from MMKR will come out and do a full blown presentation. And I see Jill Swint is still in attendance. I'd like to thank Jill and Mert Woodard and David I can't even say talk. I've got tongue tied, David and Beth for their important work in in getting this audit done. So any questions related to financial matters? You'll have a comprehensive review of finance at our next work session.
All right. Thanks for that update, Mr. Westrom. Let's quick go through the list and see if anyone has questions, although it sounds like we'll get further information and have the ability also to ask questions before the regular meeting in November, right?
That is correct.
Okay, any questions today from Linda Cohen?
No questions.
Okay, Cian Falconer.
No questions. Thank you very much, Jim, for that information.
Sarah Johansson.
No questions today. Thank you.
Chris McCullough.
Nothing. Thank you.
Cheryl Polzin.
No.
Bonita Lucky.
No questions.
All right, I have no further questions either. So thanks, everyone. All right, I think that that then concludes our work session for October twenty six, twenty twenty. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Bonita Lucky, so move.
Linda Cohen, second.
All right, thank you. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, yes. Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Cian Falconer.
Yes.
Andrea King.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here, and let's take a five minute break and then reconvene at six o'clock for our book study. Does everyone have the Zoom information for the book study? All right, we'll see you at six o'clock.